To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, it's in Jesus' name I lift up the men and women who are here today. Those that hold authority over us, those that are representatives of us, and those who are here to have an additional voice. First and foremost, we know you're a God of order, that chaos has no place in you. So I pray these men and women hold fast to that order, that they seek your wisdom, your guidance, and most importantly, your will in all matters up for discussion today. Bible says in James 3:13, "Who is wise and understanding among you by his good conduct let him show his works and deepness of wisdom?" And again, it says in verse 17, "But the wisdom from above is first pure, peaceful, gentle, open reason, full of mercy and good fruits, impartial and sincere; and the harvest of righteousness is sowed in peace by those who make peace." Lord, I pray your spirit will fill those believers here today, that your spirit will open, shatter, and flash, that your wills may be known through the spirit. And Father, I pray also for those who don't know you, that they may see your work through your spirit by your sons and daughters. Lord, I pray your blessing on this meeting, it's in the precious blood of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Next up will be public comment on anything on the agenda item. If you have anything, step to the podium and state your name and your address, please. Okay.
My name is Bill Long, and I'm with the N.O. Department of Public Safety, Highway 64, and US Highway 231. We're working to protect the health and safety of citizens of Montgomery County. At previous meeting, one of you spoke of identifying property owners who have five acre threshold, and indicated that there would be some difference in the treatment of those property owners. All citizens should be treated equally. Their health and safety should not depend on how many acres they own. All citizens should have freedom to safely work and play on all of their property without exception. You may have forgotten that I once mentioned my cousin down in Georgia. I said that he was concerned about his living situation as he got older. I promised my cousin that if he needed a place to live, I said I will build a house on my property for him to live at. It should not matter if I have four acres or seven acres. I should have property rights preserved for all of my property. Anything other than that would be a violation of property rights according to the fourth amendment of the United States Constitution. Many citizens may want to build a house on their property for their parents or for their grown children. A person should also have the right to sell part of their property without any concern that that part of their property has less property rights than the other part of their property. Any attempt to treat citizens differently based on the amount of acreage owned is unconstitutional. We believe that the health and safety of citizens of Montgomery County should not be compromised, and we continue to believe that for safety of the, saving health of the citizens, there should be a maximum of 30 decibels as measured from the property line of the nonparticipating property owners, and a minimum setback of 26, 40 feet from the property line of the property, nonparticipating property owners. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else?
Good morning. My name is Cara McCollough, and I live on 425 East, which you may know as the unofficial bypass of State Road 47 with the bridge closure. So I live on that road, I run on that road, ride my bike. My husband and his family farm on that road, and I'm here today to bring awareness to the safety issues of that road due to the increased traffic because of that bridge closure. Hoping to get some safety measures, including maybe some double yellow lines, a reduced speed limit, there is no speed limit posted. I've learned that the speed limit when it's not posted is 55. People treat it like Interstate 74. So I'm just hoping to, like I said, bring awareness to this and hope that we can get some movement on an immediate change in bringing safety while the bridge is closed, not waiting until the bridge is reopened, to get that, those safety measures in place. Thanks.
Thank you, Cara. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item, which is open commercial industrial reassessment for rental services. Cheryl, you been there?
It is for a base amount of $157,360. Do you have a combination or something?
Several seals.
I believe the base proposal is $200,000. I'd ask you to take them under advisement and have the assessor review the written motion.
Yes.
At this time, I entertain a motion to take two bids under advisement to our next meeting.
Would you take them under advisement at this time?
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Cheryl, if anybody here would be available for a seat during, like, the end of the session?
Oh, um, do you want to say? No, no, we're fine. Thanks.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the April 23, 2018 meeting. At this time, I entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second. Have a motion at second. Any discussion or changes to the minutes before the vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're down to claims. Jennifer?
Thank you. Good morning. I have the accounts payable, payments docket, in the amount of $3,246,205.84. That's up a little bit because we've had our monthly distributions, wheel tax, and lit, as well as for weeks worth of claims on there. And then I have two payroll dockets, the April 27 docket, in the amount of $336,976.50, and the May 11 claims, or payroll docket, in the amount of $337,418.50.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Have a motion at second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Jennifer, anything else for the auditor?
Just the Stakehold Auditors Conference is this week in Fort Wayne, so I'll be out Tuesday and Friday for that, and then I'll have something later on.
All right, moving on to reports from the Department of Health and Life and Officials, Highway.
Well, I really don't have any reports, but I'm going to go ahead and go into the Bytunas.
Okay.
There was three bids turned in, and I recommend we accept all of them.
Okay. At this time, you've heard from the Highway Director, he reviewed the bids for Bytunas and recommends that we accept all three bids, which is kind of standard of how we've operated in the past with it. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Bytunas bids, and as recommended by Jeremy Coles.
Second. We have a motion at second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of accepting the Bytunas bid as recommended, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Your Highway report, Jeremy?
This is just a, it's an annual report on finances. Have to do it every year.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion at this time, just as acknowledgement of the annual Highway report to the Commissioners. So, move. Second. We've been in motion at second to accept the annual report from the Highway Director as presented. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. What else, Jeremy? Anything else?
Just trying to get the roads back to shape.
Be snowing before you know it.
Don't use that word.
All right. Moving on to Jim. With the Ken Road Plan.
First of all, I'd like to appreciate everybody showing up for the city, our county engineering program. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. I know I'm a little bit long-winded, but real quick, what it is, is, you know, obviously, federal governments, state governments, that serve tons of money, road tax and everything, they're passing out for everybody. But reality is, it's being very competitive. We've got several funding for, mechanisms that we do. We have an LPA program, which is a local public agency. However, with those fundings, when we identify the projects, like the one that we're doing with Country Club, from start to actually be able to start construction is about a four to six-year process. So it's, you know, government works really fast, except this one. The other form is community crossing grants, which we can apply every year. This helps with infrastructure. We've been doing a lot of road paving with this project. However, the state gives communities like this under $55,000 up to $1 million to apply. Last year, we applied for one point, we had $1.6 million project, and the state is supposed to be able to share 75% of that cost. However, we got $670,000, nobody can do the math, we did not get 75% from the state. The reason is, over the last few years, there's been more and more applicants applying for projects for this, and last year, there was a request for $425 billion for the project. The state only funded $300 million. So that's where we're getting pretty short. So basically, what it is, is we're getting very competitive, and we have to be competitive to show the state that we know what we're doing to help support funding. Our next called project is going to be due in September 28th, so we're going to be identifying projects coming up. New thing that just came out from the federal government is, it used to be called a tiger grant, now it's called a build grant. The federal government is allocating $1.5 billion, which Indiana is able to get $250 million. This is going to be more earmarked to rural communities like ourselves. So basically, what I've got here is, well, moving down the road, you know, we've got to be very competitive because we're competing against other communities of our size to get money. We are doing a road impacts, or road inventory system. We're doing a bridge inventory system, which counties require to do that, but the counties do not have a vision of what they want to do. So what we're going to come up with, and I present to the Commissioners and some of the councilmen that have seen this, is actually a long-term thoroughfare plan to identify routes throughout the county. Mark, if you want to move to the next slide. So what a thoroughfare plan is, a network of roads connecting the communities around there and identifying these. So we have routes to promote commerce and also providing emergency access, helping with our rural school systems to actually identify projects. So basically, if you want to say, you know, how did I develop this thoroughfare plan? Mark, the first one. Next one. First one I've got shown up here is the county, and everything in green are state highways or the I-74. So, you know, we are pretty lucky to have these many routes. I mean, this almost looks like Indianapolis with all these routes. Excuse me. Mark, next slide. Next thing I did is analyze our freeze ordinance, frost freeze ordinance. Mark, if you want the next one. Everything in red is routes that during the wintertime, Jeremy allows people with eight million, eight tons or more to use these routes during the wintertime. So you can start filling in the puzzles in here. Then the next thing what I'm doing is, you know, connecting the community, establishing routes that will support commerce. A lot of this is agricultural that we're trying to emphasize. Also, long-term commercial and industrial, as you know, let me see if I can point. Out here, we're in Newport, the Redevelopment Commission and the Regional Sewer Board are expanding sanitary sewer out to, along 32, out to the I-74. The redevelopment is looking at bringing a 16-inch water main out here. What we're trying to do there is provide infrastructure to help try to develop that area. So, Mark, if you can go to the next slide. So what I started identifying...
Mark, keep going.
What I'm starting to identify, and I know it's kind of hard, these black lines are actually the primary routes that I'm looking at. We've got coming down here, over here at Alamo, obviously 55. Then also, what I'm showing, because we've met with the state on either side of 231 and north, is I'm looking at creating bypass routes through here. We met with, I met with the state Indiana Department of Transportation. They're long-range people, people that are looking at 20, 30 years out. I met with people that, NDOT, that are looking at the five to seven year. One thing that they're looking at is from the overpass, just south of London, down I-74. They're looking at making that four lane through there. So what I've done is, you know, looking at the thoroughfare, and then one thing I've identified on a secondary, you know, down the road, is taking 650 all the way through here to make that as a secondary route. Well, since that time, I had always envisioned putting an overpass over the railroad tracks and 231 in this location and have it interchanged by public safety for a lot of schools up there, and also just bring, develop commerce in this route. Well, since that time, the state of Indiana has created a tax, a tracks overpass program, which they're looking at, state by, putting in about anywhere from 12 to 16 overpasses in the community. And basically, the rail coming through here is what they classify as a medium mode rail system, which everybody knows, it seems like in town you always get stopped every other minute with a train going through. The other, so the other thing I'm looking at is possibly extending Memorial Drive and putting the bridge and connecting that to 231 and running that up the west side of the bypass lane. Again, what I did, what I've done there is look at what we're spending time, county highway with our equipment, coming around and getting up there. I mean, it's not a huge amount, it's eight or 10 minutes, but if you look at our equipment, our fuel, our downtime from employees sitting in trucks, you know, believe it or not, that runs up to about anywhere from $15,000, $20,000 a year, wasted time. The other thing is, what I looked at is from the jail, from Sheriff's Department to get around, if we extended that, we're actually saving just under four minutes for runtime for them to get up in this jail area. And that doesn't include if we get, if they get stuck with the train. So we're doing analysis on that. So basically, in a nutshell, and I'll try to, Mark, if you want to go to the next slide. You know, again, what I said, I met with all the NDOTs, we're looking at the roads down through here. Mark, one more. What we're also looking with NDOT is, over here, what we're looking at industrial. I'm going to propose we do a traffic impact study on the 2,600 acres, 2,600 acres that we're looking at here. Because we do a traffic impact study, this is going to help dictate NDOT, what they're going to do with 32 over to 11. So basically, what I'm trying to do is get us out of reacting mode, but long-term planning. So what I've done is proposed, actually just doing some engineering studies in here. See what it's caused, what kind of right-of-way, how can we fix drainage? Because again, any funding that we're getting down the road, the big thing for the federal government is, you're going to have to fix drainage. The last time I saw, Montgomery County doesn't drain very well. So I'm proposing to the Commissioners several home re-engineering studies, but the other thing I'm asking for them to do is engage a company called Peter Municipality. What this is going to do is how are we going to pay for this? So what I'm looking at is putting a five-year fiscal plan together to see how we can afford this, what mechanisms can we do to help pay for these improvements? So that is some of the things that I've requested the Commissioners take a look at and improve those. So basically, again, in summarizing, what I'm trying to do is with Commissioners, the Council, the Redevelopment Commission, the Sewer Board, what we're trying to do is develop a plan so that we know how we want to develop this down, down the future. Again, you know, we've had people look at some places in Newport, I met with them. If we can show these industries that we have a vision, how we want to develop and dictate it, will help grow. When I met with the NDOT, they said, you know, with this plan, we'd like for you to present this to the next road school, because a lot of communities of your side, counties your side, need to look at this. I wouldn't present it, because I don't want to let everybody know what we're doing, so we can get client share of the funding. But again, you know, let's move on down the road and be able to not have to react. Sorry for the long-winded.
I like the way you use down the road, the highway engineering.
Well, down the road, you look at this plan, this is not a five-year plan, it's not a 10-year plan. It's, you know, 20, 30-year down the road. But it's a plan that we need to put in place to continue, you know, the vision. Because this set in stone, no. But at least it's a plan, it's opened up a dialogue of communication across the elected officials, the community, and then hopefully we get this into a ordinance dictating what we're going to do, what kind of right-of-way we're going to need, what kind of utility investments, the width of the pavement. We just, you know, we need to be able to provide a way that we can safely drive across these roads. Because, you know, some of these farmers have these big brain trucks, I'm sorry. And we've got to create a safe thing, especially with brain trucks passing, school buses, and we've seen a lot of problems, and we need to work this out.
I think one of the things that brought this to, for us to notice, was the fact that a lot of our roads that had been upgraded were still under the Frost law, not the exemption, but not to travel on those roads. And really, there are some of those roads that are in pretty good shape now, which should have been able to sustain an eight-ton load or greater. So that's what started this conversation, the one thing, and then the other thing is the potential of economic development and safety, as you spoke of, and the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Department, specific to Memorial Drive. I do like the overall plan. It does offer us flexibility. It doesn't say we have to do it this way, but it's something to shoot for and plan towards, depending on the growth in this county. If it's industry or residential growth or whatever, we, we need to be ready to react and at least show that we have a plan, as you mentioned earlier, to move forward. So I appreciate what you've done, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, next up on the agenda, going to old business, is Order 2018-4, ordinance amending the noise regulation of the Midenergy Customer Systems.
Okay, this ordinance contains a few more changes, and so I'm going to go through those today for you. The noise level has been changed from 48 to 50. There is, still included in this, the five-acre limitation, and you can see in sections 4A, B, and C on page three, that there's a breakdown of that, of how that works in terms of the noise above the distance, which would be, continue to be 1,000 feet to the nearest primary structure for nonparticipating owners, and for nonparticipating owners, if they, if their residence is on more than five acres, and then 1,500 feet from their appropriate line for those who have a residence on five acres or less. So it changes, changes that, as you guys had discussed. It also eliminates the setbacks, which are complicitous of those noise buffers. More substantially, this new draft adds a section 155.10C on the next slide's page, which now poses a two-year limitation on a permit. And Mark, I want to point out to me, there's no limitation, our expiration date for permits issued under the ordinance, and so now there is a two-year limitation from the date of issuance on that. And then we've added 155-17K, which is enforcement provision, and although the existing ordinance has some, some enforcement provisions, this would beef up the enforcement capabilities of the building commissioner in order to broad, provide broader tools for enforcement.
Anyone have any questions? This is just introduction.
I guess I, I have several questions I'd just like to ask, and I, you know, any, any county, community that is, that is decided as a community that they do not want to consent or, or have, just have wind energy be part of their community or, or business or industry in their community, have been able to, to regulate that through setbacks. And I, I'd like, I'd like for you to explain the difference between setbacks and what this actual wind ordinance is, and, and or, what, by changing this wind or this sound ordinance, wind ordinance, sound ordinance mainly, what kind of risk are we putting ourselves at, if that's where we leave it?
Well, you have the right to regulate noise under a specific statute, and so the law says that you can do that as long as your regulations are rationally related to your goal. Your goal would be to regulate noise from wind turbulence. So if that's your purpose, and that's the manner in which you, um, conduct your regulation, and your regulations are reasonable, then your ordinance will withstand legal challenge. Now, setbacks are a land use restriction, and again, in my opinion, I've said before, that is not allowed if you don't have something, if you don't have something. So when proponents of more regulation talk about, for example, the Rush County case, which I have right here, the Flat Rock Wind case, that case, the issue in that case was not whether the county commissioners or anyone else could make the, the wind distances longer, the setbacks longer. The issue was whether the Board of Zoning Appeals, acting under a zoning ordinance, had the authority to do that. Whether the Board of Zoning Appeals had the authority to do that. That's a complete, we don't have a Board of Zoning Appeals, you don't have zoning. One of three counties that don't have zoning. So, that's why I said before, you, you can't have setbacks if you don't have zoning, you can regulate noise and vibration, as you, as this proposed ordinance attempts to do. But you don't have free rein to just do what you, whatever you wanna do, because the law says that your regulations have to be reasonably and rationally related to what you're trying to regulate.
So, I mean, looking at what has changed in this wind ordinance, in my view, is not going to accomplish what some people in this community stop wind energy. It's, this is just a guideline they're gonna have to work with. If stopping wind energy is your goal, then the only way you do that is through setbacks. That's definitive.
Do zoning.